I'm going to call the meeting to order at six thirty P M for the Neshoba Regional School Committee. Uh, tonight on March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five. The first item on our agenda is to conduct the pledge of allegiance. So if you guys want to mute, arise if you can, and I will recite for you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Alright guys, so the first item is public comment. I have not received any public comment from the public. So we'll go right past that, head over to the consent agenda, and I wonder, Amy, do you have that motion handy?
Move to approve the consent agenda of March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing none, uh, let's take the vote. I vote yes. Shondor.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
And I think I got everybody. My screen jumped. Alright, so that's the consent agenda. Um, the school committee chairperson update, there's nothing beyond the regular agenda to share with you all. So we'll move on to our student representative report, and I do see that Ryan and Ava are here. Thanks, guys. So go right ahead.
So for, for the junior class, we have prom coming up, which is definitely taking a lot of our kind of time and energy towards making sure that goes smoothly. And then Stu Co has their lip dub going. Um, so we also just scheduled a planning session for our next student advisory council with uh, Superintendent Downing sits on that as well as Dr. Boynton. So we, Ava and I did have a question for you guys, if there was any like specific topics you kind of want to hear from the students directly. Our last one, for example, was a talk on like diversity, equity and inclusion and how we can kind of look to better promote that. And we had a bunch of kind of student ideas. So in a second, once Ava's done, we'll just kind of ask to see if there's any topics you would like us to talk about. So then Ava can tell you a little bit about, um, we were on a podcast, which she'll tell you a little bit about, and I think you guys were on it too. Ava.
Yeah, so Ryan and I did a podcast for, um, what's it called?
It was digital learning at Neshoba.
Digital learning at Neshoba, and we had a section on it, just kind of talking about our roles as student government leaders and how we kind of got into it, why it's so important to us. And we gave some advice to maybe other people that are looking to get into student government. So I thought that that was really fun. You guys can listen to it. It's out now. Um, and then spring sports have just started. Um, the girls across actually just had their second game of the week and we won, uh, I think eleven to two. So, but we'll be back soon because now that they're all starting up, we'll be back with more updates. And then the next Friday, Winston Zhao and I are heading with Mr. Kaiser to Student Government Day in Boston, which I'm really excited about. It'll be really fun. So that'll be a fun report to give back to you guys. Um, I signed up to, I don't really know what it was. It was kind of just like an argument on digital learning for, in education. So we'll see how that goes.
Yep. And then our, our active minds chapter has, um, a field tip to Gillette Stadium coming up soon, which is, um, all the different chapters in the area come to, we kind of learn more about mental health and socialize specifically, it's specific to student athletes. So I mean, that's all we have for now. If you guys have any input on what you want to hear from us during the student advisory council, that would be definitely appreciated.
Thanks, Ryan. Thanks, Ava. I just dropped the podcast link into the chat. If you guys want to check that out. It was a really great celebration of all of your hard work and how you guys are really helping Neshoba kind of lead the way for, uh, on student leadership. So that's great.
Madam Chair, that link, uh, that is also in last Friday's common, uh, that was published on the twenty first. So, uh, folks can go to the common and find that link there.
And there's actually a lot of different podcasts that they've done thus far. This is not the first one, and they're all riveting. And I like to say that they're just the right size for my commute. So it's a good chance for you guys to listen to them. Uh, so Ryan, you are, you are meeting with Superintendent Downing, Student Advisory Council. Um, and you guys are, uh, can you just elaborate a little bit more? Like each, each time you guys meet, there's a different
Yeah.
theme or?
Yeah, it's definitely, um, it, we kind of, the conversation, it's just like an open conversation with twenty or so kids. Um, we kind of start off with like a topic or a workshop type thing that Ava and I would plan, and then um, a lot of people kind of chip in and just the conversation kind of goes in its own direction. We were just wondering if there is any kind of inspiration or foundation you wanted us to kind of start with in there.
Yeah, so I'll open it up to the committee. Any, um, ideas, guys?
If not, we'll think of something.
Um, I wonder if there's an opportunity to just kind of loop that in with, um, some planning with the student council.
They really are two different elements.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I love that you asked this question, Ryan. I really do. And I'm like,
Yeah.
I think it's, it's so, um, just so indicative of how amazing the representatives, like how, how well you're doing your job and how engaged you are with the student, with the school couns, school committee. There's too many councils and committees.
I know.
So I'm, I'm working hard to come up with something before we let go of you tonight.
Well, if you, you guys can also always like email some ideas. It's kind of just like feedback that you would like to hear from students on like the environment of the school. Our last meeting, we talked a lot about um, diversity, equity, inclusion, like we said before, and kind of like fair punishments for certain things that students might do, like how students are feeling about the teachers, the environment. And I think that could maybe tie in. I don't really know. Maybe this might be a stretch, but into budget, like kind of see what's working well in school in what kind of areas and kind of like use that. I don't know. I guess your budget's already set. But I think the feedback would be really helpful for the school committee just to know what the environment in the district is, like how students are feeling at school, what can you do as school committee to kind of bring in a more positive, engaging environment for students where they're like happy at school, if that makes sense.
I, I wondered this, you guys. I know that the student council, the student advisory council and the school council are three different opportunities for students to be involved. Um, the school council is really in charge of the school improvement plan.
Yes.
But Ava and Ryan, I mean, Ava, you're on the school council, right? Yeah, you're on all three. Um, so I wonder if the school improvement plan, which was so robust, so fantastic, so well presented by Dr. B. I wonder if you could use that as a roadmap for things to talk to the students about, because getting feedback on that plan is probably a great place to start. Because there are so many things that she talked about in her presentation that like totally fired me up. And I was like, this is amazing. This is awesome.
Um, yeah, because we did, um, like we said, uh, when we all met the school committee with the Stu Co about the handbook, which I did get a lot of feedback on, but that's also a good idea.
Yeah, we have a, we have a planning session on Tuesday, so we can definitely spend some of that time planning, kind of looking through that, see if there's anything specific we want to kind of present to the advisory council. And then obviously you guys can email us anytime. Until then.
Yeah, and I feel like there was one thing that, um, Dr. Boynton talked about a lot that I found fascinating, and that was the high schools moved toward project-based learning. And how you guys were really, um, you were really starting, the last time, um, Ms. Cohen and I went to talk with the Stu Co, there was movement in that direction toward teachers adopting this methodology. And I think that's in the school improvement plan too. So I wonder if, like, that's something that I'm interested in, because I know that your seven to two thirty experience is really important to me. And there's a lot of information out in the world right now that says that there's student disengage, there's a student disengagement crisis, and there's something, that's something that I care a lot about. And I think that project-based learning is oftentimes thought of as the antidote to that disengagement. So that's something.
Like, learning strategies as a whole, we can kind of bring to the table and look into project-based for sure and see. I'm, yeah, perfect.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, guys? Awesome. Alright, so thanks, Ava. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You're always welcome to stay, but we're gonna, um, we're gonna move on and we'll not be offended if you have to go.
Thank you.
Um, so guys, now we're going to move on to the superintendent's report. And Kirk, just a very quick question for you. I know that you have the middle school related arts Spanish model in two separate spots. Are we going to see this in the superintendent's report and then again in new business?
I memorialized it in the superintendent report. It's just got to be real quick.
Got it. Alright, so let's hear from our superintendent. Go ahead, Kirk.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just wanted to let the committee know on Monday, I attended the Joint Committee on Ways and Means Budget Hearing that was held in Amherst, Mass at, uh, University of Massachusetts. Um, it was an interesting meeting. It, it basically was the three commissioners of early childhood, uh, pre-K to twelve and higher ed, along with, uh, Secretary Tuttweiler to essentially describe and, uh, defend the governor's proposed budget with, you're familiar with through our budget process. Um, the interesting part was, uh, I give it to our high school teachers from around the Commonwealth. They rallied up the troops. There were hundreds of students, uh, demonstrating at the budget hearing uh, in Amherst advocating for increased funding to public schools. Um, once I was able to get into the meeting, because it, the auditorium was so full, they were not allowing everyone in. Um, uh, I was able to hear, uh, testimony from our state representatives and state senators. Well, shouldn't say testimony. There are questions to those who testified, uh, regarding state funding. And I, I think the mood, uh, the theme was generally the same, that yes, there are some issues and problems like chapter seventy circuit breaker, uh, regional transportation that need to be, um, uh, redrawn, remade, refunded, uh, use the term that you wish. I will say that our representatives on that committee, Senator, uh, Kennedy, as well as Representative Killcoin, advocated, uh, for the positions that we've taken in terms of fully funding regional transportation and fully funding circuit breaker. So we just, we wait now. Uh, the House budget should be coming out, uh, the week before April vacation to understand if the House is recommending any changes to the governor's budget. Uh, tonight, you're going to hear, um, a presentation from our middle school principals, along with Assistant Superintendent Friend on the middle school related arts and Spanish model. Uh, there's just a very brief summary in the superintendent's report, along with a link to that presentation, but we'll use that agenda item to get into that detail. And I'm going to now turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Friend. She's going to talk to you about universal screenings uh, and student learning goal growth update. So Assistant Superintendent Friend, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. I wasn't sure which way we were going to pivot, so thank you for the clear direction. Uh, tonight's update relative to our universal screening, our winter screening got pushed a little bit back because of the budget um, meetings and the time and attention there. We've had the presentation ready to go for a couple of weeks, so here we are. Tonight's update includes two key updates from our winter screening results as follows. Um, how we are doing in relation to our district's student learning goal, one. And two, how our students are performing relative to universal screening requirements for early literacy. That is specifically where we are identifying students in K to three who are potentially at risk for learning challenges, reading challenges in particular. So the overview that we prepared for you tonight is just that. It's a district-wide overview. We would like the committee to be aware that our school-based teams, um, have reviewed their school-based data with their principals. Grade level teams have reviewed their data and their PLC structures with their grade level teams, and individual teachers have reviewed their data for their classroom, as well, um, teachers shared the information from the winter screening results with families during conferences that were held earlier this month. In terms of our student learning goal, great news. We are on track to meet our district's student learning goal, which, um, is for seventy percent of our students to meet or exceed the benchmark of typical growth. In reading our winter benchmark, data shows that we are right there with our goal, with seventy point six percent of our students meeting or exceeding typical growth. In math, we have exceeded the goal. Our winter data shows seventy six point eight percent of our students meeting or exceeding typical growth. And of note, that's a five point five percent increase from the fall. And as for star early literacy, we're still working to step over that seventy percent mark. But you will see in the presentation that's been hyperlinked in the update that we have exceeded our proficiency goals. And we are seeing a noted notable decline in the number of students identified in the urgent and, uh, intervention and intervention category. So we'll talk more about that in a minute, which is, is really promising. So for the second part of the update, um, that is how are we doing with our K to three student population, specifically the early literacy screening requirements that the committee and the community will be reminded are required by Massachusetts general law. We are required to screen students in grades K through three for early literacy twice a year. We are assessing students three times a year, so we're exceeding that requirement. And the purpose of the universal screening as a reminder is to identify again those students who may be at risk for reading challenges as they progress in the years. And that's what we're doing at Neshoba, and that's been, um, the intention with our efforts as it relates to the implementation of high-quality instructional materials and and really trying to firm up and strengthen our foundational literacy at the earliest grades. So the goal of screening is not just to flag students who are at risk, but it's to understand why they are at risk. And that's what our screening measures do, is they provide us with diagnostic information uh, to pinpoint students' areas of need, and then to use that data to provide targeted instruction and interventions at the earliest moment possible. So on that note, I am very pleased to share some highlights, which I provided in the superintendent's report to you from our winter screening, both in terms of growth from fall to winter and year-over-year trends from two thousand and twenty-three, fall of to winter two thousand and twenty-five. And they're listed for you there in the update. Um, I, I, it would take me a, just a second to read through them, because I think they're noteworthy. And they're a commendation to our teaching staff and our instructional coaches and our students who are working really hard. In kindergarten, um, our at and above proficiency levels increased from seventy-five percent to seventy-seven percent in the winter. And we saw fewer students in the intervention and urgent intervention categories. In grade one, our at and above proficiency rates increased, um, from seventy-three percent to the fall to seventy-four percent in the winter. And in grade two, where we saw the most significant growth observed, we're really excited about this growth, is that our at or above benchmark increased from fall to winter, from sixty-five percent in the fall to seventy-six percent in the winter, which represents eleven percent, uh, eleven-point gain. We also saw a decrease in lower performance categories on the on-watch intervention and urgent, urgent intervention categories. Super exciting. And then in grade three, our at and above proficiency rates increased from seventy-seven to eighty percent, which is a three-point gain. And we also saw a decline there in students needing intervention and urgent intervention. So that's the fall to the, fall to winter growth, which is important, but two data points don't necessarily support a pattern or a trend. So that's why we're excited to see some early indicators of year-over-trend improvement in grades K to three, and we've listed those for you here. Specifically, uh, the number of students, again, from fall two thousand and twenty-three to winter two thousand and twenty-five. The number of students identified for intervention decreased. This is raw numbers of students from ninety-seven in fall of two thousand and twenty-three to sixty-six in the winter of two thousand and twenty-five, our most recent screening, screening window. And the number of students in the urgent intervention category. This would be the bottom ten percent, decline from seventy-eight in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three to forty-one, winter two thousand and twenty-five, which represents a nearly fifty percent reduction in the number of students falling in the urgent intervention category. So the data is promising and is working to indicate and support that the systems and structures that we are working to build to support foundational literacy, which includes our implementation of high-quality instructional materials, our work to strengthen foundation, foundational literacy programming to make sure our teachers have what they need, our implementation and integration of MTSS, which we've spoken about before. Our PLCs, hard work of our principals, our teachers and our coaches and their students is beginning to show, um, in the data year-over-year trends from two thousand and twenty-three. So that is the update from the winter screening, um, results, which concluded in February. So we'll be excited to share another update in the spring when we, we capture that data at the end of the year.
So Madam Chair, we'll move on to the presentation on middle school related arts after we take some questions, um, from the committee on the superintendent's report.
Sounds good. Thanks for that. And thanks, Laura. That was really helpful. Um, I wonder, uh, who has questions? Amy Cohen?
Thank you. Um, this is a lot of data to absorb and, um, but the one thing that I'm wondering is how do the conclusions from the screening tie into goals in the school improvement plans? That's, I have two questions. That's one of them. Um, like, do, because it occurred to me that we, we approve the school improvement plans before this data comes out. So like, how does that cycle work?
School improvement plans are built upon the superintendent's goal, and we have that seventy percent growth benchmark on those screenings. So those are reflected in the plans as well.
So for something like the early literacy, um,
Early literacy, reading and math.
Yeah, there was one that was at sixty-seven point two percent. So something like that would get picked up in the next year's superintendent's goals.
No, that is a perpetual goal that we have. And just because that number is below the seventy percent benchmark wouldn't necessitate that. We continue to have those as year-over-year goals because of the typical growth benchmarks would be at the sixty-fifth percentile. And so we sent our benchmark at seventy percent so that we can accelerate, which is why we're right now pleased that we have some indicators that we've been able to reduce the number of students needing urgent intervention dramatically over the last two years.
Yeah, that, that's awesome. Um, and it's nice to have data to point directly to that, you know?
Yeah.
Um, my second question has to do with, um, when we get a report on the high school, um, screening results. Because this is K through eight.
Yeah, I'll remind the committee that we don't have a universal screening assessment for the high school. Laura, do you want to talk about that a little more?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's just it. You know, we assess, um, through grade eight for reading and through grade nine for math. Um, I, I can share that just across the board while the presentation focused on our student learning growth data, um, and because that's relative to our district's student learning goal. The proficiency data in grades four through nine also shows improvement from fall to winter.
So it's like the MCAS, really the, but there's just no screening in high school because the screening is not necessary by the time you get to high school? I'm sorry if it's a stupid question.
No, it's actually a very good question.
Good question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ms. Friend.
No, I, I mean, I think the intention of universal screening, um, at its purest sense is to capture student need at the earliest moment possible. That's why we're really leveraging, um, resources to begin with a really strong foundation for our students to capture them and their needs at the earliest moment possible, because the, the the quickest we can intervene and provide intervention or target support, the sooner we close that achievement gap, and that achievement gap does not grow over time. So, um, that's where our energies, um, are, are focused at the elementary um, and continue into the middle level, but that's really where we're targeting really intensive supports at the elementary level that really capture those discrepancies and that discordance at the earliest moment possible.
Alright, I would just say that, um, Amy, your point about MCAS is well taken by me, because that was a screening tool used at the tenth grade level. Almost the, people used to call it an autopsy, because it's kind of at the tail end. It's, it's not what Laura was just describing, but I think that it used to be a really important indicator for better or worse, and the voters just did away with it. So that whole system is going to start, I, I believe, um, disintegrating, uh, slowly but surely. So, uh, there is nothing for the high school level, because the companies just don't put it, make anything for them. So we're reliant upon department-level um, assessments and things of that sort. SAT data, if the kids even take it anymore. Uh, Amy, vessels?
Uh, I had two questions. Uh, the first one was about, um, the, uh, sharing that data about how kids did on the screening with parents. You said it was through parent-teacher conferences. Is that correct? What if a, what if a parent didn't come into parent-teacher conferences? And also, um, I, I, like, I guess I'm wondering for the kids that were struggling, were all those parents booked for a parent-teacher conference? Or, you know, if they were kind of mid-range, did a call go out? Or like, how exactly are parents being, um, how, get, getting this explanation if they didn't come to parent-teacher conferences?
Great questions. Um, I take the second question first. Um, and that is, we are required in its best practice, um, to notify families of those students who are falling in the urgent inter, urgent intervention and intervention categories through grade three. So that's required as part of the law. Um, and so we have systems and tracking measures that are, are being followed at the school-based levels to ensure those, the contact is made through, through a phone call, um, and then a follow-up letter. So that happens K to three. Certainly, it's best practice at any point for a student who is struggling to receive communication from their teacher about the struggle, and then, most importantly, what we're doing about it to help, um, bring parents into the conversation and awareness of, of what's happening at the school level, so that just being part of best practice. But we are notifying families of those student, of students who fall in the bottom two categories. And then following up with further communication about students who are responding to intervention after those are put in place. In terms of the question relative to, um, the STAR reports and families who do not attend conferences. Certainly, if any family requests a report, we are absolutely going to be providing that report and that data to families. The challenge is that we want, we want the report and the data to be adjacent to a conversation, because it's one data point, part of a larger picture of how the student is performing in the class. So, um, sending the report home without a conversation around what is the data confirm, um, ye or nay, is part of the larger, um, efforts that we have at the school-based levels to bring parents into the, and caregivers into the conversation and awareness about how students are doing.
Okay, thanks. Um, can, can I ask one more? Is that okay?
Well, on that, on, in that vein, Amy, I just wanted to add that Laura Kirk and I had this conversation earlier today, because I asked the same question that Amy asked. I think that for a middle school in particular, these teachers don't have twenty-five kids. They have a hundred kids, and they only have twenty-eight, thirty slots for conferences. So it then becomes incumbent upon a parent to then, I don't want to say burden, but like there could be a deluge of emails to teachers of the other seventy parents who are requesting the report but don't feel they need a conference or didn't get into a conference. I think that's a logistical thing that I just wanted to kind of throw on the radar that, for example, I didn't sign up for conferences because I didn't want to take two spots. thing that I just wanted to kind of throw on the radar that, for example, I didn't sign up for conferences because I didn't want to take two spots. And I thought I was doing everybody a favor, but then I realized, oh, man, I missed the STAR report. So then I had to burden them anyway with emails, et cetera. So and they sent everything to me and it was great. But I think that there's, you know, seventy people who are not going to get a conference slot that should still be given the report and shy of having a hundred conversations. I just don't know how you do it. But I I love her know that, too.
Madam Chair, I appreciate that. Yeah, it's good feedback and we are going to work on that in our next Principals Council and begin crafting how we solve that conundrum.
Yeah. Okay, but Amy Vessels, do you have another question?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, like Amy Cohen, I am interested in some type of kind of looking at how kids are changing and learning and growing at the high school. And I'm wondering if, like, I know you're already doing some stuff around portfolio. And I'm wondering if that's going to be kind of where this is headed, that kids, not only that they, I mean, yeah, MCAS is great, I guess, or whatever, it gives them some kind of score, but like at least with a portfolio or something, the kids are reflecting on their own work. And, you know, thinking about and acknowledging what they've done. They're not just getting the score report, right? So I'm wondering if that if it's moving in that direction so that we start to see some some of that happening at the high school as well.
Yeah, I I mean, I we're still developing and building out the model for the digital portfolios at the high school, but we agree the balance of a showcase portfolio and a reflective component of the portfolio is important. It is an opportunity to build students' metacognition about their own growth and strengths and celebrations. So that is work that is well underway at the high school. I think we had pointed at the beginning of the year, we would love the opportunity to share a couple of those portfolios with the committee, if allowed, towards the end of the year, of course, with student permission. But work to continue to deepen our work with the portfolios is definitely in the plans as we move forward at the high school with Dr. Boynton.
Okay, thank you.
And I and I would also like to just commend Assistant Principal Janine Boulay, who has been leading the work there. Great work happening and great feedback. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Laura, I have a quick question for you. Could you just help anybody looking at this who is perhaps not an early literacy specialist like myself? You have this reading test or reading screener, but then you have an early literacy screener. Can you just tell us why they're different?
I can. I don't have the specifics in front of me around what domains they assess early literacy versus reading. I can tell you that the early literacy assessment assesses foundational reading skills like phonemic awareness, phonics development. It also includes early numeracy. The STAR reading test is a more traditional vision of a reading assessment. So it's got vocabulary. It has comprehension questions. It has critical thinking questions based on a a passage where the early literacy test really assesses students' foundational skills to be able to comprehend. That makes sense.
That's so helpful. Thank you. And then I'm looking at a Viverito STAR report, and I won't tell you the score, but the categories, the color coding on the family report is different than the categories you're including. So on the family report, it's not meeting expectations, partially meeting, meeting and exceeding. So I just wonder how those mesh with the charts you're showing.
So the it's a good question, in a little bit into the details here. The report that you have, because your students are older, is based on state benchmark. And so we're using the category, the state benchmark reflects the categories of MCAS aligned with MCAS. The district benchmark, which is the benchmark that's reflective of early literacy screening requirements, is based on the urgent intervention intervention category. So a different set of categories, again, to capture those students who are at risk for early reading or reading difficulties.
I will also, if I can comment as well. Madam Chair, is the report you're looking at is based on those proficiency benchmarks? Whereas the data that we're looking at and the data that our goals are written to are based on growth, not benchmark. So we're looking at growth numbers. There are two different ways of looking at the data. When we're looking at a student, we want to look at both proficiency mark as well as how are they growing? Because if you just limit it to proficiency marks, then you're not validating a student's growth that they might have over a large bandwidth that is below that proficiency mark or above that proficiency mark.
Got it. And then when the parents get the family report of the younger kids, do they see these indicators as well? Or is is theirs about benchmarks and not about growth?
It looks similar.
It looks similar to these charts.
Yep.
Okay. Just so that they can see where they, if they want to, see where their reports fit into the grander scheme. Any other questions? All right, guys. So that is it for the superintendent's report. Thank you for that. We are now going to move on to new business and we have without objection, I just want to touch upon letter B before we get to letter A. And seeing no objection, I'll just let you guys know that Alita has been leading the charge here to track down where the legislature is on remote meeting allowance and extending it beyond the March thirty-first, Alita, if I'm not mistaken, deadline. Meaning that anything after March thirty-first, any public meeting would need to then be in person unless the governor, the legislature and the governor extend it. They are really on the cusp of extending it into, I think, June or July of two thousand twenty-seven. So the governor just needs to sign it and then we will have our remote meeting allowance continue for the next couple of years. We are all confident that that will happen. So it won't really affect us because our next meeting in April is in person. It wouldn't come to a head until our second April meeting, but we're confident that it will be signed and extended before then. All right, so we'll, I'm sure Alita will keep us completely informed on that front. Now let's move to our next or only other new business item, and that is Kirk's presentation on the Middle School Related Arts Spanish model for two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. And I ask for your not patience, because this is super important stuff, and I know you guys all want to hear it, but this presentation is going to be a little bit longer than our normal ones. We have some special guests here that I'm sure Kirk is going to introduce first off. But we're probably in for about a twenty to thirty-minute presentation on this important item, so I'd like to give you fair warning on that. So over to you, Kirk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I actually think the presentation will be more brief than that as we were looking to carve out time for questions around that. So, Madam Chair, I would like to, once again, reintroduce Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend. She's going to be presenting this evening with Principal Joel Bates of Florence Sawyer School, Kyle Grady of Hale Middle School, and Mr. Sean O'Shea of the Luther Burbank Middle School. So as you know, we've been briefing the committee all throughout the budget process of reimagining our middle school related arts program. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Friend to kick us off.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. And Alita, if you have the presentation and you wouldn't mind sharing your screen, that would be helpful. I'd like to, while Alita is pulling that up, I would like to just give a special thank you to our three middle school principals who have joined us this evening. Speaking firsthand, I can share that they have worked incredibly hard in collaboration together and with me to develop a thoughtful and responsive plan to address our current needs. Together, we have developed an updated and calibrated model for middle school-related arts in Spanish. How awesome is this picture? This is just distracting. And just so amazing to see our student athletes, our middle school student athletes there. The model is grounded in both our current constraints and our commitment to student learning. Thank you to our principals for their diligence, their collaboration and their solution-seeking mindset. I have to say, this has not been easy work for any of us. But as we know, the financial necessity accelerated the need for us to take a look at our middle school model and make adjustments. So we've strived to build a balanced and effective model that honors what we know about our adolescent learners and what they need. And that is exposure, exploration, mixed grouping, movement and high-quality instruction. So I'm starting us off this evening with the big picture and model rationale. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. O'Shea, who will speak to more specifics about the model. And we will proceed. So, Alita, if you could click on to the next slide. An overview of our model rationale. So as we're aware, and it has been spoken about before with the committee, is the challenges that we've had with our eighth-grade class size. And the urgent challenge was the need to address the class sizes in grade eight with our enrollment numbers and the needs, the needs there, which we have spoken about and Superintendent Downing has spoken about with the committee in prior meetings. So the revised model addresses the need for a section reduction in grade eight, reducing the sections from five sections to four sections to better meet student enrollment needs and moving Spanish into the related arts model. And over time, the model will allow students increased exposure to Spanish over the course of three years as we work through the model. We looked at distributed impact to ensure that the adjustments that we made were designed to ensure the impact is distributed across schools and grade levels as equitably as possible. And we prioritize maintaining our related arts programming. So despite our staffing and our constraints, the model preserves programming in all of our related arts, ensuring students continue to benefit from a well-rounded middle school experience. In terms of considerations in developing the plan, we took into account staffing and scheduling logistics. Again, the developmental needs of our adolescent learners. We also examined the offerings from near-peer districts, which showed a variety of programming at middle schools, and our updated approach is aligned in offerings with our near-peer districts. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. O'Shea, who is going to provide some more specifics about the model itself.
Thank you. Can you go to slide three, please? Thank you. Building on that overview from Mrs. Friend, this slide shows how the model will work in practice for students. We've organized our approach in two complementary components. On the right side, we have our school-based programs with full-time teachers at each middle school, music, physical education and Spanish. These are offered throughout the school year with students attending each class two times per cycle, providing consistent opportunities to develop skills over time. On the left side, we have our district-based rotating teachers providing instruction in art, engineering and health. Students take each of these for one trimester, also meeting two times per cycle. These specialists will rotate between middle schools each trimester, allowing us to maintain all programs while efficiently distributing resources. At the center of our design is our primary goal, ensuring a consistent student experience across all three middle schools. This approach guarantees that every student receives instruction in all related arts, regardless of which school they attend, while attending, while addressing both our fiscal realities and educational priorities. I believe Principal Grady is next.
Kyle, I think you're muted. And I think next slide to Alita.
Next slide. Thank you. And thank you, this is Viverito, for letting me know I was muted. Thanks. Thanks, Sean. And just a thank you to the school committee again for letting us present on this. It's been quite a bit of work and I think we're happy with where we landed with our results. What you're going to see in the next two slides are the related arts courses that are available to all middle school students starting next year. You're also going to see the frequency for which those students will attend these courses. In this slide, you'll see that students will take music, PE and Spanish all year long. This works out to two classes in each of the three content areas every week. There is an option for an additional class each week for students in PE and Spanish. We have a we have a similar model that runs right now in our middle schools. And in that model, we refer to these additional classes as related arts plus classes or RAS plus. And a little bit later, you're going to see a student schedule, which will help to for you to see that. If you could just go to the next slide, Alita, that would be great. So this slide addresses the other three related arts courses. So it's going to be addressing the art, health and engineering. Starting next year, students will have an opportunity to take art, health and engineering on a trimester-based rotation. So similar to the previous slide, it works out to two classes each week in these three content areas. Also similar to the previous slide, students will have the opportunity for an additional related arts plus class, a RAS plus class in art, health and engineering. I'm going to turn it back to Principal Shea, who's going to now walk you through the trimester-based rotation for art, health and engineering.
Thank you. Could you go to slide six, please? Thank you. This slide illustrates how art, engineering and health rotate across the three middle schools on a trimester schedule. While the order of the subjects may differ from school to school, the structure ensures that each school offers all three subjects over the course of the year. And all students in all grades will participate in these rotating related arts classes. They'll take one subject per trimester and attend classes two times, as Mr. Grady was explaining. For example, a student might have art in trimester one, engineering in trimester two, and health in trimester three. While a student at a different school might follow a different sequence, but all students will have access to the same content by the year's end. Again, this model reflects a coordinated district-wide approach that supports equity across all schools. It also helps us manage staffing and scheduling in a structured and sustainable way while preserving all three of these important programs for our students. I believe I'll turn it over to Mr. Bates.
I think the next slide, Principal O'Shea, is the sample student schedule, which is Mr. Grady's.
Okay.
I can jump on that. So thanks again, Principal Shea. So what you're seeing here is a sample related arts schedule for your middle school students next year. And for the purposes of this presentation, we've left out the core academic courses and focus specifically on what a student would receive in the related arts classes. This is this is sort of built out as a as like a trimester one, a related arts schedule for a student. So in the model that that we've designed, students would have access to Spanish twice a week on A and C days, and that would occur all year long. They would have access to PE also twice a week on B and D days all year long. The student's music elective, in this particular case, would occur on A and C days. That is, you know, that is that is the option for students to take general music or band, and also we have the option for chorus. This leaves us then with the trimester-based rotation for art, health and engineering. This leaves us then with the trimester-based rotation for art, health, and engineering that, uh, Principal Shea was just talking about. So it, for this particular student. They're taking art trimester one, and then they would take health trimester two and engineering trimester three. Um, those are those, uh, those subject areas that, that are, uh, in parentheses. Um, a- and where I had, uh, referenced earlier, um, in, in the earlier slides, that there's a related arts plus class, that is on this, this E day. Um, and, and to be honest, we've, we've toyed around with whether E day and, uh, is at the end of the week or whether E day lands middle of the week. And we're seeking some, um, input from our staff around, around that. Um, but what we have here is that th- this is where a student would have access, um, to a, an additional course in Spanish PE and those, um, three rotating, uh, classes, the art, engineering, um, and health. Um, so, uh, uh, offsetting that is that, um, a student who's taking band would have the opportunity to come together at a grade level to do a combined rehearsal. Um, uh, for, for, for the benefit of performances. So. Again, just, just, just to, to go back to an earlier statement, you know, this model does preserve, um, keeping general music, chorus, and band within the academic, academic day, although it might not be reflected in this particular slide.
Alita, if you could go to the last slide, please.
Mr. Bates.
Thank you, Principal Grady. So, um, to wrap up, we believe that this is a model that between the year-long opportunities of music, PE, and Spanish. And the trimester rotations of art, health, and engineering, that we are providing students with a, a balanced approach to, um, preserving the related arts that students have experienced and, uh, our communities value. While still addressing our, our class size and, um, staffing considerations. Um, but also the opportunity to maintain that idea of the, the RAS plus, uh, model that Principal Grady spoke of to. To deepen the learning or to extend the learning for students as well in those particular areas that they've had that exposure to. And with that, I will turn it back to, uh, Assistant Superintendent Friend or Superintendent Downing for any questions that you might have.
I think Kirk's trying to unmute.
Trying is the right word, Madam Chair. Well, hopefully I was successful.
Yep.
Um, I want to thank you, and I, I, I want to thank Mr. Bates for joining us from Nature's Classroom. Uh, I know he is with the Florence Sawyer students currently, so that would explain, uh, uh, your getup for this evening here, Mr. Bates.
Normally I would not wear a hat to a school committee meeting, but preferable to what my hair looks like at this point, so. Thank you for allowing me to be here.
So, Madam Chair, uh, I think our team gave a very comprehensive look at what our strategies are moving forward. This optimizes our resources while also maintaining all the working agreements that are in the negotiated agreement between the school committee and our teachers association. Um, but I think the most important thing is it gives our students an opportunity to still continue on these courses, uh, that are embedded in our system now. So that they get that well-rounded experience that, uh, Assistant Superintendent Friend always talks about in the middle school. So that as they move on to high school, they've had a taste of the choices that they will make as they get deeper into their classes as they get older. So with that, we will take any questions from the committee.
Great. Can, can I just ask a quick clarifying question? On any given day, how many blocks are there in a day?
You would have your four academic blocks plus your two related arts blocks. Um, and, uh, the wind block, is that right, Mr. Grady, the wind block? Thank you.
That's what I was forgetting. Okay, thank you. So there's technically seven blocks in a day.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, so let's go to questions. Amy Cohen. Oh, you're muted. Boy, we're really out of, uh, practice here.
I'm so sorry about that. Um, so I think that you presented this in a way that's easy to understand. Um, I'm just trying to, I was looking at my own middle schooler's schedule and just trying to convince myself that. Um, the courses that she has now are the same. It's just a, a difference in the schedule, right?
That is correct.
Okay, and so. Then the other question I had here is for the RAS plus, um, opportunity on the E days. So if I, it sounds like this is an opportunity, like if somebody wanted to take a third day of Spanish, they, they could. But if they needed their clarinet lesson, is that also when that happens or?
Ms. Cohen, the E day, uh, would be when all of the instrumental lessons come together, so that would be the day for band.
Okay, so if your, if your child does band, that's when the, the group band is going to.
Yes.
Happen. But chorus would be during one of the other. Music, um, slots if they wanted to do band and chorus?
No, chorus would not be a time during, um, band.
It's a separate slot.
Yes.
So it'd be like A or C on the schedule that you've presented?
On, on the, on the plus day. Chorus is a separate block, and then band is its own block.
That's by design so that, um, students in sixth, seventh, or eighth grade could take chorus at the same time.
So they're at the same time, so, so will students be able to do chorus and band or not?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. So sixth, seventh, and eighth grade would have access to chorus in a, at the same time at a block different than their band time.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay. That's all.
I go next. Oh, no, I can't hear you.
You're muted, Leah.
Oh, good. You didn't hear me scream. Jackie, go ahead. Now Jackie's muted. I mean, it's contagious. Go ahead.
For any, um, families in the community watching who may not have had a middle schooler yet, um, whose students are supported through special education. Can a member of the team talk about where those identified, um. Goals are worked on and if that would have any impact on their schedule or accessing some of those activities?
I'm happy to speak to that. Um, so there is no impact to students receiving services from where they are currently in our middle school model. Um, they, they have a designated period of time every day where they are able to work on, um, the goals listed in their IEP through, uh, 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 what I need next or a win block. Um, that is allocated, um, every day. Um, and if a student were to receive, um, you know, services beyond that, there's some allocated time, um, uh, through the, through some related arts classes where, where they would be able to receive those services. But, um, y- there, there is no, there is no change. And there would be no impact to those students who, um, uh, re- receive, uh, any special education services.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Kirk, I have a procedural question for you.
Yes.
You are not looking for us to approve this operational change. You are just sharing this with us.
That's correct, because we just think it's important for the committee to be informed and, and have the talking points to speak to as we were making this shift. As it's been very well-known, and we've been publishing regularly through our communications to our community, the necessity to make these moves. So, no, we are not looking for vote here tonight. Um, just keeping you informed.
Okay, so then I had, I had one substantive question for you. I know that we have heard from staff members who are concerned that this newer model would not ready students for Spanish two going into ninth grade. So that's a concern I have too. I mean, I know that. So I'll just do a little bit of editorializing. I think that starting to learn a foreign language in eighth grade by the research is not early enough. So if we all had our druthers, we'd be teaching this from kindergarten up, and then the kids would be truly fluent. Um, so it's already, I know, a challenge for kids who are not, don't have this aptitude already to leap to Spanish two in ninth grade. How will we manage this for kids so that they can reach the highest levels of, say, Spanish by the time they're senior?
So, uh, I am going to ask, uh, Assistant Superintendent Friend to join into the conversation right up to the work in preparation for that. We know we're looking at a two-day-a-week model, and there's a trade-off to that. While we'll be going for three years. Um, we'll have a minimum of at least 216 days in the middle school experience prior to high school. Currently, we have 180. The trade-off to that is it's two days a week over three years as opposed to five days a week over one year. Um, I'll turn it to Assistant Superintendent Friend, uh, to give a little more color to that.
And I would also say there's the RAS plus, which, which offers the opportunity for a third day, um, during the week as well, Superintendent Downing. Um, so I would say that that's our goal, right, is to, um, prepare students for proficiency at Spanish two. When they enter into the high school, it's going to take some time, um, in order for students to, um, to be able to gather enough exposure over the course of the three years. Um, it's going to just take some time for us to get there. What I can say is that our high school world language department, um, led by the work of our high school department chair, Maria Davis, has been working with us. And working directly with our three middle school Spanish teachers, um, to develop a model to identify priorities and what's essential for students to know, understand, and be able to do. So they are the most well-prepared for our current seventh graders, our current sixth graders and what have you. And they're working on a scope and sequence and a plan that has included taking release time already this school year, working during early releases. We also have already allocated summer academy working session. Um, that's collaboration amongst the high school team and the middle-level team. And we also have some teachers attending a proficiency academy this summer as well that's sponsored by the state. So we're working on the curriculum and instruction side heartedly and together in collaboration. And I just have to commend our teachers, our middle-level teachers, and our high school teachers and, um, Department Chair Maria Davis for helping us really dig in, figure this out. Um, and making the best possible experience for our students, given the limitations and the timing that we're faced with. So a, a ex- supreme shout-out to our team.
I would like to add to that as well, that one of our graduation requirements is that you, uh, take a world language for two years. Under this model and our course offerings, w- we acknowledge it right up front that our current seventh graders will only be in this model for one year. The se- sixth graders will be in it for two years, and our current fifth graders will be in it for three years. But once they get to the high school level, they will still have the full complement of four years in high school to go all the way to AP if they choose. Because they can begin at Spanish level one at their freshman year and still make it to AP, um, Spanish by their senior year. So the, the courses aren't being closed off, and that, those opportunities aren't being closed off to them ultimately at the end of that language journey.
Thank you for that. Uh, Amy Cohen.
Yeah, sorry, I have one more question. Um, so with this kind of new opportunity for choices of this RAS plus. Um, choice that's going to be presented to our middle schools, schoolers next year, how is that going to? Happen? Um, or is there going to be some kind of like Google form that's sent out where, to parents, where parents talk to their kids and they make that decision together or?
Yeah, I think Mr. Grady can, uh, address this question.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Cohen. Um, that's a great question. Um, s- s- so the, the teachers are rotating, um, to each building, uh, based on a trimester. So you imagine you have your art teacher, um, i- at Florence Sawyer for the first trimester. So that means that students at Florence Sawyer would have access to an art class during the first trimester in Bolton. And then as those teachers move to, um, another, another building. Suppose it's engineering at Florence Sawyer, uh, they would then have access to an engineering plus class for the second trimester in engineering. Um, a- a- and, and the same thing for health of the third trimester. So, uh, it provides equity for everyone across the district as far as access, uh, to these related arts plus classes. But it also guarantees that students are getting additional PE and additional Spanish classes all year long for their related arts, uh, uh, plus classes. So, uh, there's not a selection that students are going to make aside from their music electives. And that's where they're, they're selecting, um, band, uh, chorus, um, a- and general music.
So. Okay, but if they, I thought that they could choose to take a third Spanish class as opposed to, like, I know if they're in band, that's when they're going to be doing.
Yeah, Ms. Cohen, you're speaking to the RAS plus day. So Kyle, can you explain how do students get into their RAS plus?
So, um, in PE and Spanish, they, students will take, um, the related arts plus class all year long. They have access to PE and Spanish, uh, throughout the year, um, for one of those two related arts classes on, on an E day. Um, uh, that, that, that is not something that they elect to. That is something that they, that they will be scheduled to, to, to have. So, um, with the exception of students who are in band. Those other three classes, it is dependent upon where the teacher is located. So i- if they're located, um, a- in, in Bolton, then, um, th- they would, they would be taking that, that course, that particular course.
Mr. Grady, can I ask you the question this way? So let's just imagine a trimester where art is at Hale Middle School. On that RAS plus day, as a student, uh, when the other students go to band, and if I'm not in band, would I go to art? Would I go to PE or would I go to, um, Spanish? And do I have the option of going to one of those three on that RAS plus day when the other students are in band?
Thank you. That's what I'm asking.
S- s- so if I'm understanding the question correctly, just one trimester on an E day.
Yeah.
Right. Um, so.
In other words, do I get my preference on that RAS plus day of art? Um, Spanish or PE?
Yeah.
If I'm not in band?
Y- you do not. You are, you are scheduled based on the teacher, um, the, the related arts teacher that's rotating. So if it's the art teacher, you're getting art, and then, um, you're getting PE and then Spanish on a rotation.
Can I, can I add in?
Please.
Um, the scheduling is very complicated, and trust me, like, we have to go back and forth all the time. We're like, is this what it is? Um, and, um, so understanding that can be complicated. The, the, on the plus day. Um, students get an additional Spanish for a certain period of time, and I can't remember if it's a trimester or quarter at this time. And then they get, uh, PE for another one to make it all equitable and work. You don't get an extra PE and Spanish on the plus day all year. Th- that's broken up. So you're getting the two consistent core classes all, uh, all the cycle, and then you're getting another additional one. So it's like another 12 or 15 or something, um, in addition to the, the core classes. Um, and then it rotates to the other class that is, um, within the, so PE a- and someone. In addition, the rotating, uh, teacher is also like art or health. That's, that's an additional one too.
So Mr. Mr. O'Shea, in a mathematical sense, over a 12-week trimester on the RAS plus day. Uh, four of those sessions would be Spanish, four would be PE, four would be art. So they don't choose them. They rotate through each of them in that proportion.
There is not a selection on the side of students. They're not saying, I would prefer to take this. They're getting an equitable distribution of whatever the rotating teacher is along with PE and Spanish. Um, but throughout that trimester, so, um, uh, they, of, of course, the exception is if a student is, is in band, um, they do not have access to that. Um, but th- there is, there is the sort of, out of four weeks, I mean, out of twelve weeks, you're getting four, four and four, um, uh, access to those, those three content areas.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm, I'm so glad I asked because that wasn't, um, it wasn't obvious to me until you kind of spelled it out and, and the logistics of it. And now it makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
That's great. Uh, I just want to insert into the record and for anybody who's watching, um, a really important note on the genesis of this whole thing. And that, uh, and it, it brings up an op ed that I read in our local newspaper recently that is begging the question whether or not our school system is responsible with the resources that the taxpayer provides to it. And I think that this is an excellent, um, example for any resident who's wondering that, that our administration is taking on a really difficult task, upending a system that has been in place for a while to better allocate resources. Because if we were, if we weren't doing this and we just maintained the five sections of core academics in the eighth grades, we would have very small class sizes. And in Hale in particular, the class sizes would be, I'm looking at it now, thirteen kids in each classroom, when we would have third grade classrooms with twenty-three kids. And it's just not a good allocation of resources. And so as painful as this might feel to some and questionable to others, I think that this is an excellent example of our administration looking at the resources that we have and seeking to best allocate them through fiscal responsibility and excellent educational programming. Um, so I, I just keep going back to this, that this might not be something that is well received by all. It might also seem, um, as if, you know, one more thing we're cutting. But I think that it's really important for the public to keep in mind that what this school administration and this school committee is trying to do is put forth a budget that is completely responsible from start to finish. And this programming switch is one of the ways that they're doing that. And so if anybody has any questions about that, especially the writer of any future op ed, please feel free to reach out to me in particular or to reach out to our superintendent and we can help walk you through what we've been doing for the last many months in painstaking detail to make sure that the budgets we're asking our towns to pass are as slim as they can be. So, uh, Kirk, thank you for this presentation. We appreciate you guys all keeping us, us in the loop. Thank you to our principals, especially Joel. Good luck. Good luck, sir.
There are some really great kids here with us. They're all, they're doc, they're all doing well.
That's fantastic. We're so, uh, grateful to you. Thank you so much, Joel. And thank you, everybody, for being here. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
I, I publicly want to acknowledge the hard work of our three middle school principals, along with Assistant Superintendent Friend. Um, Ms. Cohen's question was an excellent one because it really gave us a chance to illustrate the complexity and the depth and really the precision for which we had to put this schedule together to meet, uh, the words that you just expressed so eloquently. So thank you to all of our team members for their hard work.
Appreciate it, guys. It's not easy and we appreciate you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for the support.
All right, everybody. So on to our finance and operations update. This one is going to be a little less weighty than Ross is used to in the most recent months. So I'll turn it over to Kirk or Ross.
Uh, we'll just go straight to, uh, Ross Mulcaren, our Director of Finance and Operations.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing. Uh, thank you to the school committee. Um, I'm gonna, uh, start with apologizing for failing, uh, to probably deliver my information in the five minutes it's allocated on the agenda. But I'll, I'll do my best, uh, to be a champion of brevity, uh, this evening. So, uh, with regards to the operations report, I think Alita is going to be bringing it up. Um, no major changes. Um, certainly this is the end of February that we're looking at. Uh, you know, with, uh, the, at that time, the heating season, snowplow, et cetera, et cetera, still well underway. Uh, typically, y- you know, we talk about, uh, the salary surpluses. We've had some changes to those, uh, that are reflected here. Um, we're still going to be, uh, in a surplus position. It might not be as, uh, as high as it was reported previously because we've had some staff return that was unanticipated and these things happen, um, as you know, um, uh, with people's, uh, schedules and their personal things. Um, so we've had some staff return, um, that was not anticipated. Um, and that has changed some of that position. But overall, we're still tracking, uh, the higher surplus than last year at this time. Um, but other than that, no major changes. Uh, we're continuing to watch everything, um, as the school year comes into, to sort of like, you know, it's on the horizon, the end. Uh, so, but overall, we're still tracking well, um, and no major concerns. We're going to obviously know a little bit more about how much circuit breaker we're going to have to use, uh, to level out that special education account. Uh, and, you know, certainly through the budget process this year for FY twenty-six, uh, we've, uh, put ourselves in a position, um, uh, that we will likely not be, uh, having that same conversation next year. Uh, we just have some better predicting coming out of that office now that we have, um, some steady, uh, leadership there, so.
Great. Thanks, Ross. Any questions on the operations report?
And this was reviewed with budget and Warren last week, so I can take any questions.
Excellent. Yeah. So thank you to our Chair Scott, who, um, brings this up each time. All right, I'm not seeing any, so I, I think we can move on to the school lunch update.
Yeah. So as Alita's pulling up the presentation, um, you know, I looked at this in a lot of different ways without getting too far into the weeds. But I think the school committee, um, you know, deserves a bit of an update here on how it's going with food services. So for those of you who are on the committee, um, or just a general review, uh, a- at about this time last year, we notified the committee that we'd be going out for a request for proposals to, um, contract out for our food service managing, um, position. So that had previously been a director, uh, within the district, an employee of the district. So we contracted with Witson's, um, culinary and they provide us with a, a food service manager, uh, that works with our kitchen managers, uh, but also brings in a lot of their own resources to support the, the food service program here. Uh, I'll talk a little bit about that, but there's some financial pieces and then some, also some data pieces. Um, so just real quick, the things that I'm going to cover today, Alita, next, uh, slide, just some of the positives that we're seeing uh, across the board, uh, some data and financial pieces, and then talk a little bit about next steps. And again, this is the goal here is big picture and, and also being, uh, uh, brief. Um, so Alita, next slide. So in general, um, I, I think it's important to note that we're really trying to shift to our measure with food services being our student experience. So we've had a lot of increase in our options from K to twelve and shout out to our kitchen managers and our kitchen staff that are really working hard to pull through, uh, into a new system and to also manage a lot of options. And they've had to learn some new things. They've had to be flexible and they've also given a lot of good feedback along the way. Um, uh, more so at the high school, but where we've been offering tasting stations. So this is giving students a preview of what may be coming down, uh, the road with our menu options and getting some feedback of whether, whether or not it's going to land. Um, you know, this is a great place to test, uh, seafood to see if there's, uh, there's interest in certain, uh, dishes. Um, and this is not something that we're really able to do before, but we are, we are able to do now is to get some feedback before putting something on the menu. Um, on the right hand side, you see that it looks like a carrot. Um, that is the, uh, icon for the app, um, that families and students, uh, if they, they have a smartphone, somebody at the high school can use. That links to all of the menus, uh, for all of the schools. And what that really does, and I encourage people to use the app because they can build their own student profiles. So if you have a student who's at Hale and a student at the high school, you can build two different profiles. So you can see those two different menus for those students. Um, this allows parents who need to have allergy awareness to get right into the ingredients right away. Uh, it allows them to also look at nutritional information and what the ingredients are. Even though you may not have an allergy, you still may be very interested in what the ingredients are. And what I've seen for the, not just the allergy piece, but certainly the nutritional and the ingredient piece, is that, uh, students are much more aware than I think when we were, uh, in high school about what is in their food. What do they want to eat? What don't they want to eat? What things do they want to stay away from? What ingredients do they want to make sure they put in their diet? Um, so this gives them the opportunity to be able to do that as well, especially at the high school level, obviously. Um, we've also moved to a lot of com- um, compostable materials. So all of our cutlery, uh, is now compostable as well as most of the trays, uh, that we're trying to use and not just the trays, but also some of the smaller pieces at the, um, at the different levels. Um, again, with the increase of the options, we have healthier provisions coming in. Um, we had a kitchen managers meeting the other day and while there is some still want for some staples, like those chicken patties, uh, from students, we are able to offer with Witson's as a partner, a higher, um, uh, nutritional value, uh, chicken patty, um, and a, a different quality of those types of things. Um, in addition to some of the things that you see on the plate here with the fresh grapes and the, the tomato and cucumber salad. The menus are more creative, um, and the bigger piece for me, and I think stepping in as the finance and operations director, noticing that we had some great things happening in our kitchens, but we didn't have cohe- coherence across the district and student experience within, within the cafeterias. So by making this move, more of our students and are having more of a similar experience. So there isn't, um, one thing happening in one kitchen and not happening in another. It's more, uh, equitable across the district, um, and just a little bit more of a harmonious experience for our students. So with regards to the, those, those resources and what our, our kitchens were doing, um, we have now been improving our equipment, where we've improved some of our service setup and how things and how kids move through the line, what's set up where, so that they see what's available and they see previews on plates before they even walk into the line. They know it's coming. Um, and certainly just whatever they need for supplies, um, in getting those things in the hands of our kitchen staff. Uh, Witson's is very hands-on. Uh, Myra Maldonado, who's our kitchen manager from Witson's, is in the field every single day. Um, we also have a chef, um, as well that works with us from Witson's. So, um, we just had a, we had a little bit of a change and a little bit of a window where we didn't have one, but we've recently, um, had Witson's bring a new person on board and that's going really we- uh, well. Um, and spending a lot of time at actually the high school, um, in supporting, uh, the program there. Alita, next slide. So just to give you a sense, um, on average, every day in our district, eighty-nine students are eating breakfast at school this year than they were last year. And at lunchtime, we have about a hundred and thirty more kids eating school lunch. Some months it's much higher, some months a little bit more even than it was that, or to what it was last year. But in general, we just have more students, um, accessing the breakfast, which always sounds good, uh, and certainly the school lunch as well. So you know your, our counts from, um, uh, the budget process, but now we're having more, more than half of our students are accessing that, that free school lunch, uh, each day. Uh, Alita, next slide, please. Um, so need to provide a little bit more detail and, and, and explanation here on FY twenty-four versus, versus FY twenty-five. That's what I briefly talked about expenses is a few things that I want you to know. These are expenses August through February. Um, it's not a full year yet. So this question came up during budget season, um, Joe Gleason from Lancaster had asked, uh, for a community member about the contracted services for, um, food services. So if you look at FY twenty-four, the contracted services, the provisions and the supplies, what we were spending on provisions is really now shifted to contracted services in FY twenty-five with Witson's. We pay Witson's monthly. They're in charge of all the provisions. So they're doing all of the food ordering, all of that kind of stuff for us. We're not doing it. It's part of the contract. So that cost, that expense has really shifted uh, into contracted services. So we're spending about the same year to year or year to date, year to date, um, between those lines, uh, as we were FY twenty-four. What you'll notice about our cafeteria staff, and this is actually a good thing, is that, um, while it's gone up about twelve thousand dollars, it's actually more than that because we're not paying a food services director. So we are having our staff work more hours because we need people to be able to support the breakfast program, which more kids are taking access to and just in general, setting up a better experience for our students. Um, and we, we're working on, continue to work on solutions for staffing and to make sure, um, that we're able to provide the student experience that we want and make sure that our staff, um, have the right amount of hour, right amount of hours to do it, um, and come through. On the revenue side, um, something that I want to bring to your attention is this is August through February, what we've been paid. But these are lagging. So this really only represents on the ca- the state reimbursement, what we've received, uh, in payments for meals served through December. So we'll still have more revenue coming in, but it does always lag a little bit. Because once you've done all your, your service, you have to calculate, place it on the claims for the state. They have to process and approve and then we get reimbursed. So in general, we don't have a significant change in our financial position relative to how we're self-operating, but we've seen an improvement in the student experience and that's what's important for us here. Uh, on the next slide, so we're going to continue to engage the sustainability team at Witson's. There's more work to be done with, um, whether we're doing recycling or composting or whatever it may be. There's just more work to be done, um, within this district to, you know, I think w- we have an obligation to, to be more green and to be more, um, sustainable, but we also have an obligation to our students in that regard because that's what they expect. That's the world that they're living in. And that's what they want to see within our kitchens and cafeterias. Um, will we be setting up our school nutrition council? Um, having Witson's without, uh, that chef and also being new, um, this has sort of been pushed a little bit by me because we want to make sure we're fully ready. Principals are aware I'll be tapping into the school council, um, uh, opportunity to, to reach out to families and see who can come in and help serve on our school nutrition council. And certainly Ryan and Ava will be good resources at the high school to get students involved in that as well. We also are going to be doing our student experience survey. Um, now that we're mostly through the school year, um, we'll have to time this right with the other surveys that go out because we don't want to over survey our students or our families, um, because we don't want people to not give us some feedback. Um, but from my perspective, you know, the, the biggest indicator that things are going better in our kitchens and our cafeterias is the trash can. So the last couple of years, when I would look in the trash can in the cafeteria, it was filled with uneaten, uh, now obviously not eaten food, but also things like, uh, vegetables or fruits or whatever it may be, where there was a missed opportunity for kids to have something that's nutritious, but also good tasting. And what Witson's has done and what our kitchen staff have stepped up with, um, is really putting those things into places and into, into, uh, recipes where kids are eating them. And what I see now is less waste in our, in our, uh, our trash cans. That all being said, we still need to hear exactly from students and families what's going well and what we could improve upon. So we can have that feedback as we transition into the next school year. So, uh, probably not a great, um, example of brevity in five minutes this evening with my presentations, um, but I hope it was informa- informative and I can take any questions as well.
Yeah, that's great. Thanks, Ross. Um, Alita, do you mind taking down the slideshow for me? Awesome. I wonder if there are any questions for Ross on the school lunch update. All right, seeing none, we're gonna, uh, move on and just, um, say thank you to Ross for that great update. Uh, we really appreciate all of that hard work and again, transitioning for better programming.
Yeah. And, and again, I can't say thanks enough to our, our kitchen staff. It was something new and they've really stepped up.
Great. All right, everybody. So we have, uh, no unfinished business this evening. Um, does anybody have any burning items for the next agenda? I think, um, the planning calendar has a few things on it. Our next meeting is April ninth. It will be in person. Um, the big item on the planning calendar right now is the school choice presentation where Kirk will present some enrollment data for us. A quick reminder that, um, we're supposed to have our subcommittee goals check in. And now I'm thinking maybe that is premature. I am going to move the subcommittee goals check in uh, to a May meeting, but can all the subcommittee chairs please put that, uh, in your mind to put that on your next agenda? uh in your mind to put that on your next agenda and I'll ask the chairs to share out at a May meeting how they are doing toward their goals. Remember that this is a formative check in for us because we're on a two-year cycle, just like our superintendent. So a quick share out, um and the committee can ask questions if they have them.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Please.
Um I think I've reviewed this for you, also I'll just share it with the committee. As we're planning future agenda items, I will not be at the May seventh uh school committee meeting. I will be on a flight to Denver, Colorado for my daughter's graduation on May eighth.
But I think that we don't have, so that's awesome, but I think we don't have a meeting on the seventh. Yeah.
It's the fourteenth. Thank you. Corrected me on that before and I still, I got it locked in my brain.
Well, you got it locked, but the good news is you get to enjoy your daughter's graduation without tangling with us.
That's right. So the next meeting is the is May fourteenth.
Yeah. Um so I'm gonna put the subcommittee goals sharing. Uh let's say on the May fourteenth meeting for now. So subcommittee chairs, get ready for that. Uh anything else you guys are dying to have on the agenda in the parking lot? The last one, Amy? What?
Yes.
So we're gonna have, it's gonna be a first reading at the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, these are some juicy ones that we have been sort of just doing a little work on. I it no, I I was, they're just gonna, we're gonna need some explanations, so.
Got it. So there, it's not just commas and apostrophes?
No.
Okay. Uh all right, huge shout out coming at you guys at the next meeting for making this the last one. You're soldiers on that front. Any other things you wanna see on there? Yeah, Jackie.
Um I just wanna put a plug in that um adding to maybe the April thirtieth agenda to put a call out for interested Dear J membership advisory volunteers for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year.
Um Amy, did you, did you guys um ha- use the decision-making tool from Dear J at your last meeting?
We're doing it uh towards the end of April.
Got it. And so maybe in May, you can give me some sort of a indicator on how you, you know, how that worked for you guys, et cetera.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All right, guys, not seeing anything else. I am going to move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. I thought you guys were pranking me there for a second. Um let's see, all those in favor, let's do the roll call, myself. Yes, John?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Amy Cohen?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Amy Vessels?
Yes.
Shondor?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
And Lindsay?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thanks, everybody.